Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How's everybody doing tonight?
Woo!
Excellent. As you can see, we have a pretty full house here. And so I'm going to go over a few things. How many is it their first time coming to a council meeting? Oh, quite a few of you. Okay. So what we conduct is a, what they call like a quasi judicial hearing. So that means we have to ask questions and we have to take things in order. And one of the biggest things is to make sure that everybody has a chance to be heard tonight. So even if you hear something tonight that you may not agree with, what we would ask is please be respectful because everybody's ideas and thoughts are valuable to us. And if we have any, you know, please speak to the council, for instance. It's so easy to turn around and do this and then you don't hear, we don't hear what you're saying and whatnot. So, and keep in mind that this is a hearing that is televised and not just by the news that's here tonight, but everything that is said is a public record. And here we value respect more than anything else. And so we're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Santee City Council to order for Wednesday, January 25, 2023. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. And tonight, one more thing before I actually get started here. I want to point out the speaker slips. I think a lot of folks have seen them. And so please fill these out in order to be able to speak because we have to know who to call on, for instance. And you know, it's, it's just pretty easy, but this is a public record also if you fill it out. So people can, you know, say, hey, we want to know who was there at that meeting and we'll give them that information. So tonight, the invocation will be given by Imam Taha Hassan. I never get that quiet. Hassan or Hassan? Hassan. Thank you. And let me tell you just a little bit about him for tonight. And so the Imam is from, he serves as the Imam and Director of the Islamic Center of San Diego. He joined ICSD in September 2004 from the Colorado Museum Youth Foundation where he served as a youth instructor. The Islamic Center of San Diego, also known as ICSD, resides in the heart of Claremont and is the largest mosque in San Diego County. Their mission is to serve the religious needs of the San Diego Muslim population and work with the larger community to help the less fortunate, to educate and to better our nation. The regular activities held at ICSD are the five daily prayers, Friday prayer and sermon, and various educational talks and seminars. ICSD also works with other mosques in San Diego County to sponsor and hold events from a local Muslim community. In addition to these programs, ICSD is increasingly branching out to work with other San Diego organizations for social causes of interest to all people of faith. Imam Hassan joined ICSD in September 20, 2004. Once again, he earned his BA in Islamic Studies from the University of Algiers, a long ways away. And then he comes over here and gets his Masters in Theology in the Islamic Studies from the Theological Foundation in South Bend, Indiana. Very different areas, I'm sure. And not, not when he's doing all that, but he also is a member of the National Catholic Muslim Dialogue, member of the Advisory Board of the San Diego District Attorney and SDPD Chief, and member of the National Conflict Resolution Center Board of Directors, and member of the Interface Shelter Network Board of Directors. Well, we thank you for all your busy time that you took to be here with us tonight. We ask that you pray for our nation, our state, and this city council. And then after we have the invocation, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Eric King. Thank you very much. Please rise for the invocation.
Thank you so much. In the name of God, the most gracious, the most merciful, the Lord of the worlds, our Creator and Sustainer, we pray to you and in your name. As we start this new year 2023, we seek your blessings and guidance. So bless us all with your divine guidance. Help us to turn our ears to wisdom, our minds to understanding, and our hearts to compassion. Grant us the strength and power to keep working for the well-being of all the people, praying and hoping to achieve peace and justice for all. Almighty God, guide us to pure conviction, then give us the courage to match this conviction with actions. We pray for peace, not violence; love, not hate; justice, not oppression; benevolence, not greed; unity, not division; humility, not arrogance. And we commit ourselves to not betraying our prayers with actions that conflict or that contradict them. Let us be for truth, no matter who is for or against it. Let us be for justice, no matter who is for or against it. Let us be for hope, no matter what obstacles lie ahead. We pray for the safety and the well-being for all people and their properties in our city, our county, our state, our nation, and the whole world. Families in their homes, worshippers in their houses of worship, workers in their workplace, and students in their schools. We pray for our city and its elected officials, that they use the authority given to them to serve people, all the people, with respect and dignity. Almighty God, help us to be the voice of unity, compassion, fairness, and equality, to honor our human dignity and decency. Help us recognize the beauty of our diversity while working together for greater good, creating opportunities for generations to come. Bless us all, our families, our communities, and all those who love, care, and work for peace and justice here and all over the world. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. That takes us to our first item tonight, which is a recognition. Anybody here from Starlight Circle? Oh, that's great. Here's what I would like you to do, please. If you'll come down and fill in as much as you can right here, because we have recognition for all of you tonight. And I'd like to be able to hand out some certificates. And I know it's not going to be in order, so I'll just call you as I lift them off the stack here. Can you guys hear me out there? Is this microphone on? Anybody out there hear this microphone? Councilmember McNellis, would you mind coming down and helping out? All right. Park the water. Care to hold that microphone for me?
Yes.
Don't say anything until I say, "Down." Okay? And here you go. And I'll just hand it to me one time. So, all right. And so I'm going to say what this says, and I'll read them off, just one, and then I'll read off the names of the folks that I have on here. And, oh, they're not by name.
Uh, no. That'd be way too difficult. We're making this easier.
Okay. Here's what I want, then. Now, I need to buy in for everybody up here, though, is because I want to make sure each one of you tell everybody at least your name, because I want you to get the due recognition because you guys do so much for this community every year. So I'm going to go ahead and read this real quick. And, "City of Santee Certificate of Appreciation Presented to Starlight Circle Residents. In recognition of the efforts of all the Starlight Circle residents who adorn their properties with magical holiday lights displays year after year for all to enjoy. As a community tradition for over 40 years, your holiday lights and spirit bring visitors from all over San Diego County to Santee, helping us do more holiday lights, do east, and putting Santee on the map." So thank you very much. And since you have the microphone, I'm going to let you go first. And, you're not going to speak?
No. Hi, I'm Agnes Stippy. I'm one of the originals of the original homeowner of Starlight Circle and the original founders of Starlight Circle.
I'm Janet Brett, and I too am an original homeowner.
I'm Sue Weber, and I'm...
We're Brett and Erica O'Call, and we've been here for 17 years, and we enjoy it every year.
So we're the Moyers, and this is our first year doing this.
Oh.
Me and my wife have been doing it just for a few years.
Ray Stockton. I've been doing it for 25 years and really like doing it.
And we're the Vescos. We've been there for 28 years.
The Scooby Doo House.
You want to speak?
I do want to speak in the house.
You want to make an announcement? Well, thank you very much, everyone, for coming down here. We just thought it was so important. You have to deal with so much out there. It's changed over the years, especially those folks who've been out there for a long time. You know, you have people driving by and you have to deal with the not being able to get into your homes and people parking in your driveways, people wanting to come in as, you know, my little Johnny needs to use the restroom and, you know, and you just open your hearts and your homes, and we appreciate that.
Pocketbooks.
Oh.
We know. It's got to be tough, but you guys are amazing and thankful all for what you do every year, making the city of Santee just a more beautiful place during a very special time.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that was the fun part of this. Believe it or not, you know what? I know there's a lot of folks that have opinions about everything. And you know what? There's no reason why we can't just hear it and, you know, take it for exactly what it's worth and the value that it's worth and, you know, respect one another. But before we go on with our public comment tonight, we are going to go to our consent and calendar. Do I have any items to be added, deleted, or reordered on the agenda? Councilmember Hall?
No.
Vice Mayor O'Call?
No.
I do not have any.
No, sir.
Councilmember McNellis?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
City Manager?
No, sir.
City Attorney?
No, sir.
And do we have any speaker slips or any items to be pulled? City Clerk?
Yes, sir. We have item four being pulled.
Thank you very much. We will call that item separately. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve. Second?
I have a motion and a second. Please vote and lock in your votes.
God bless you.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item number four, which is a second reading and adoption for an ordinance to add Section 7.20.100 to the Santee Municipal Code to protect the San Diego River Corridor, finding the California Environmental Quality Act inapplicable or relying on a SEQA exemption per State SEQA Guidelines, Section 15307 and 15308. City Clerk?
So we have two speakers. The first speaker I have is Ida Fakuri. And you have three minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. It's been a while since I've last been here. I'm glad to see that the ponds on the west side of the golf course are not being declared exempt from SEQA. Those ponds are naturally formed from water that draws off of the west hills. It was redirected back in the 1950s through an outfall that sits on Carlton Oaks. Those ponds are not, were not built or maintained by the golf courses. They're natural wetlands. When I spoke with the applicant of the housing development, they disagreed. I want to be firm with this council to not waste any more funds on legal arguments in court cases as we have on Finita Ranch. This is clearly wetlands, and it should not be built upon. My advice is to carve out that element of the project.
Excuse me, sir. I need you to speak to item number four.
So under SEQA exemption, this wetland should never be re-categorized as exempt from SEQA because, first of all, I'm glad it's not being exempt, but I want to point out that going forward, that there are two executive orders, and I spoke with the California State on this, that trump the emergency housing laws that have been recently passed, their executive order 11990 and 11988.
Okay. And how's that real?
Well, my point is that those ponds need to maintain eligibility for SEQA, that as the council moves forward with exempting more wetlands from SEQA, I'm going on the record to declare that those properties, that parcel is a wetland and should never be made exempt. And I'm also making you aware of it so that in the future, we can't, we can't state that we weren't aware of that, because that argument has been made before and it's been redelegated to the attorney Hagerty, and it's been redelegated. But this council is being made aware that these are wetlands and to advise the staff to ensure that those maintain SEQA requirements. But I'm in favor of item four, exempting the other part of the property so they can be mitigated due to hazard and other types of losses. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more speaker, sir. It is Bart Bartholomew. Sir, you have three minutes, okay?
Hello, folks. My name is Bart Bartholomew, and I'm just here to, I gave, I sent you some photos, or actually Wendy was kind enough to send them to you, about the trash that the homeless folks are putting between Chump Lane, south of Chump Lane and north of Los Kalinas. And I understand that there's a number of fires that have occurred through this area by homeless people. Some of those photos show a small area that they obviously managed to put out before the fire department was called. But this has been going on for years. I wish I had a good answer for you. What I would hope is that someone goes in there, cleans this area up, and then deals with the homeless folks. I've seen things that I suspect are stolen properties, such as bicycles, brand-new shiny bicycles that are parked out there, nobody around. And I just think it's a real eyesore, and it is just not what a city as intelligently laid out as Santee is, and the way you folks maintain businesses and areas, it's just an embarrassment or should be an embarrassment. So I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bartholomew. Council comments? Do I have a motion? Well, I would like to, Bart, did you send those pictures to us? You sent those, right?
Well, I gave them to Wendy. She was nice enough to...
Okay.
Wendy did, sir, and we have them for the record.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve item number four or otherwise?
Second.
Well, I guess I can make that motion. Okay, I'll do that then. Don't normally do it, but, so I have a motion and a second. Please vote and lock in the votes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And that takes us to non-agenda public comment. For those of you, since there's so many at the first time, non-agenda public comment is something that is not actually itemized on the agenda. And so just to let you know, because many people expect us to have an open dialogue about it, and we're prohibited, prohibited on doing that under the Ralph M. Brown Act. And so we can take the testimony and hear about it and then, but we can't actually engage in conversation. So I just want you to let you know that that's how that works. And tonight, we have about 26 or 27 speakers, something like that. So because we don't want to be here for a long period of time, I'm going to change from three minutes to two minutes for speakers. And, and what you'll hear is, or you'll see on the screen, if you haven't seen it already, is there's a clock that counts down, and it'll go yellow when your time's about up. And so please be aware of that. And we will not turn off the microphone on you. However, I will ask that you please finish if you're going over by a little bit, because people get a little bit nervous and, and so they don't get everything out like they would like to. And so anyone that does continue to go on for an unreasonable amount of time, we will turn off the speaker in that case. But we want everybody to be heard. All right? Let's go ahead and call our speakers.
So Christine Wood is first.
Chrissy? Chrissy? Over here. I just want to let you know that since the person that brought this to our attention had three minutes to speak, I'm going to make sure that you have three minutes to speak also.
Bless you and thank you. That's justice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Starting now? Right. Good evening. My full name is Kristen Lily Renee Wood. I'm 66 years old and reside in East County, just about 3.1 miles from here. I'm a San Diego County retiree after 29 years of civil service with Health and Human Services Agency. I'm a member of the Cameron YMCA for about a year now. Absolutely love my water aerobics classes there. Those classes have helped me lose 60 pounds in the last year, and the health benefits have been phenomenal. It appears that I inadvertently caused quite a scandal on the morning of Thursday, December 29, 2022, after another wonderful class. And by the way, they're all great classes. I had just showered, dressed, and hugged our instructor Peggy, wished her and some of my other Aqua Sisters a wonderful "New You," and departed the locker room for Palm Springs. It was on the morning of Thursday, December 12, that my Aqua Sister Vicki called to say, "Chrissy, I'm so sorry about what happened last night in Santee." I replied, "What happened?" Her answer was, "Oh, my God, you don't know, do you? Let me send you the Instagram video." I watched it, and I collapsed in tears. Since then, the amount of organized hatred and lies developing and demonizing me and other members of the transgender community has truly been disheartening and disgusting. I'm here to spread the light of truth in the face of these inaccuracies. I'm a mom, a grandmom, and as my beloved granddaughter says, my nana. Now, please look at me. Listen to the sound of my voice. I am a threat to no one. In the year I've been a member of the Y Children have attended summer camp and have been with their parents and grandparents in the women's locker room with me, and there has never, ever been an incident, ever, not until one was manufactured using this forum to do so. Transgender is simply a medical condition, as is my need to wear corrective lenses when I drive, my high blood pressure, and my type 2 diabetes. I am fully transitioned, asking to be confirmed, at my doctor at Sharp's, who is also my gynecologist. I am sorry that this forum was previously used to spread lies and a hateful political agenda. God bless you all for this opportunity. And in the words of Maya Angelou, "A wild woman, a wild..." Thank you. "...a wise woman wishes to be no one's enemy, and a wise woman refuses to be anyone's victim." I am a threat to no one. Bless you all and thank you. Thank you.
And we normally don't allow that, by the way, but I thought it was important for you to express yourselves. And so, so let's try, after the other speakers finish, not to do the same, because we want to get through this tonight. And I know somebody's got to get home for a Matlock rerun, right? Oh, that's right. Most of you aren't old enough to know who Matlock is. All right. Okay, let's go ahead and continue. And everybody gets two minutes now. Thank you.
Speaker Britt? I can have Speaker Britt.
Somebody named Britt? Okay.
Two minutes.
Where's the timer?
It'll start.
Oh, come on.
You can start, and then it'll come up.
Thank you all so much for giving us the opportunity. I appreciate a decorum where everyone has the freedom to speak, and I know that there are mixed opinions in this room. I'm a mom. I'm a mother. I'm a naturally born woman, and I want to call this what it is. And I ask the audience to remain quiet. This is a war on women. This is an assault on the definitive work of women over the last two centuries, to be equal members of society while being protected in our sacred places under the clear and definitive umbrella of woman, a grown-up female. This radical new reworked language to force everyone to play by the rules of an ideology that is based on feelings rather than biology and truth is unsustainable and it's dangerous. If everyone can be a woman, then no one is a woman. If feelings now drive and supersede basic biology, then anything goes and all societal constructs can be torn down and remade. I mean, that is the logical conclusion. Bloomberg just ran an article today about a 45-year-old sent-to-millionaire who has a full team working to reboot him to an 18-year-old. So when he gets to that point, does he suddenly become a legal 18-year-old? I pulled up, and the vice mayor spot was open. If I identify as vice mayor and maybe even get a tattoo that says "Vice Mayor" and hand out business cards as vice mayor, am I legally vice mayor and am I allowed now to the table? Do I get to sit right beside you? Can I yell discrimination if you don't play by my rules? I'm serious. The logical conclusion of policies that are catered to ideologies that are not based in any truth is utter and complete chaos. We are asking you to step in and to put forward an ordinance that will protect women and girls. Biological women, use women's lockers room. Biological men, use men locker rooms. The same goes for bathrooms. Play the hero. We're at the tipping point in society. That's what I have to say.
Next speaker I have is Speaker Brooke.
I think Speaker Brooke is not speaking, so do you want me to go for her? Is Carrie next?
You can't see time, so you have two minutes. Are you Speaker Brooke?
No, she is, but she's not speaking.
Okay, so she's not speaking. Are you Tracy or? Okay, Tracy?
Thank you, Mayor Minto, and the rest of our city council. A fellow advocate made a comment in my social media group not too long ago. He said, "What if our kids were actually the most important things in our lives and not just something we said?" Let's let that phrase sink in. The city of Santee is standing on the precipice of a topic that could have far-ranging policy- that could have far-ranging policy change to protect the spaces used by women and children. The city leases the property and building of the YMCA for $1 per year. You have the option of not renewing that lease. Lost May, please. There we go. You have the option of protecting countless women and countless children, protection from a man who feels like or identifies with a woman on any given day. I am asking that our council put forth a motion to discuss and review on the next agenda, ending our lease to the Cameron Family YMCA until policy is changed that biological men stay out of women's locker rooms and bathrooms. I am a woman, and I say no more to men gender appropriating women.
The next speaker I have is Speaker Carrie.
Thank you. I'm identifying tonight as Kristy Lynn Wood, so I have three minutes. This is war. This is a war on women, children, and the truth, capital T. And the enemy is disguised in high heels, lipstick, and a shaved beard, trying to slap down their flag, redefine words, and demand all obey or else. This is a spiritual, psychological war, and the enemy has been exposed. Cultural appropriation is wrong, and gender appropriation is wrong. I am a woman, a true woman, and I'm here tonight because I have something called a motherly instinct. That's what I have innately as a woman, and I, my job is to protect my children. And that's why I'm here. That's something real women have. This is not about equality. This is about complete domination and superiority. We're not going to accept this. Where is the equality and protection for Rebecca Phillips? Where is her protection? This is about the protection of children and women. Never in the history of our country have we created policies based on gender ideologies, based on lies. Lies. There is no such thing as a transitioning gender. That is a made-up fantasy. It doesn't matter if you chop your penis off. It doesn't make you a woman. It doesn't make you a woman. It makes you unwell. And this is serious. We want, we are not going to bow down to your gender ideology cult. We're not. Your fantasy land. It doesn't make it real because it's your fantasy land. So here's what needs to happen tonight. You guys, while you still have your balls, do something about it. Okay, while you still have them, while you can, do something about this. We need protection for the little Rebecca's. I don't know if any of you have daughters, but if your daughter was in that locker room, what would you have done? Thank God, maybe many of you weren't in there, because I know a lot of men would have gone in, and it would have been ugly. So if we would, if we want to talk about.
Stop.
I get more time.
Your time is up.
So the next speaker I have is Danielle Wilkerson. The next speaker I have is Danielle Wilkerson. Danielle, if you can come to the podium.
Stop, stop, stop. The microphone is turned off. Nobody's hearing you. Your time is up. Carrie, your time is up.
Danielle, you have two minutes, please.
Hi, my name's Danielle Wilkerson. I am also a woman, and I am also a mother of a daughter and a son who finds, ooh, I'm a little shook after that last presentation. I came here to say something very different. Obviously, I am in support of Chrissy and for trans people in East County in general. I am against hateful rhetoric. Thank you. I'm against hateful rhetoric against anyone, man, woman, children, black, white, anything in between. And what I just listened to was incredibly disrespectful, incredibly hateful. And this woman has the audacity to call herself a Christian? Jesus said, Let he who has no sin throw the first stone.
Please speak to us up here.
Okay, sorry.
We need to be able to hear you up here.
Jesus said, Let he who has no sin throw the first stone. And I think that woman was throwing a lot of stones and a lot of hate. Yeah, I can speak. It's my allotted time. Again, continues to be hateful, continues to be disruptive. I am here today to speak about love, positivity, and that I would feel incredibly comfortable with my children in the locker room with Chrissy. Honestly, I think this woman and her violence is more of a threat than any trans person could ever be. Black trans women specifically face the highest rates of violence in this country. They are not the threat. They are not the problem. What this woman is describing is fear of men. They are afraid of men coming into the locker room and causing harm against women. They are not afraid of trans people. They are not afraid of trans women. They are afraid of a grown man taking advantage of this policy and of our children. Thank you. I will finish in my allotted time.
The next speaker I have is Jose Cortez. Jose Cortez?
I'm a little tall, so I'm going to adjust this.
Sounds good.
All righty, well, thank you, Mayor, city council members. I'm a longtime East County resident. I grew up in El Cajon and Lakeside. I consume a lot of services here in Santee. I go to the Sportsplex. I go to the Chinese restaurant Lucky's Chinese, Discount Tire. I'm definitely a consumer, and I'm a longtime person that has a lot to say about living in East County. And as someone who identifies as bisexual, as somebody who has grown up facing the systemic violence that a lot of us in the LGBTQ community experience here in East County, I have to say that this attack on Chris, on Kristen, which is, it was an attack, is not an isolated incident done by hateful individuals alone. This is part of a national campaign attacking trans people nationwide. 120 state legislature bills being proposed, just as we're speaking right now, seeking to roll back protections that have been won. And so right now, we have to not see this as an incident of individuals, but as part of a historic moment that you all, as city council people, have a part to play in. And partisanship, right, is a lot of what we hear in these spaces. But obviously, apathy is also a partisan position in the favor of the powerful, of those oppressing those who are being impacted. I'm going to say right now that the media that perpetuated the lies against Christine, the hack politicians that backed these plays of the lies in the media to try and gain position and political points are all part of the same tree. And we have to come together as elected officials, but also as a community, to call for a mass movement, for an agenda item on the next Santee city council agenda, calling for increased resources in the face of these attacks, for the creation of a center potentially here where there is none in Santee or in East County in general, to serve and educate our communities and to bring about a world that we could all have tomorrow if it wasn't for the very disproportionate impact of hateful people trying to profit off of suffering and exploitation. So do the right thing, please.
The next speaker I have is Tracy Phil. Tracy? Phil, this is a different one. Okay, Richard McKitch? Much?
My name is Richard Much. Thank you. I've been a Santee resident since 1960. And my concerns are that any person that is supposed to be a transgender, I think they need to prove to me and the community that this person has been sexually reassigned or transgendered, if you will.
Hey, stop, please. Stop, please.
From a male to a female by providing proof of this sex reassignment surgery, better known as a vaginoplasty. And it's a procedure that removes the penis and the scrotum encased testicles, and a vagina is constructed, which would transgender a man to a woman. And until such proof, these men are no more than a cross dresser or even a female personator, no matter what they call themselves or identify as or even feel like. And they need to stay out of women's lockers, showers, bathrooms, and any other areas that are designated for women only. Thank you for your turn.
The next speaker I have is Jason Fry.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members, my name is Jason Fry. I am the president of the Humanist Association of San Diego. I'm on the Hillcrest Town Council. I teach political science at a community college. And also, I am a former aqua aerobics instructor. I want to say a couple of things. Number one, when we look at this issue, we look at FBI statistics, and we do not see trans people preying on people in locker rooms. But what we do see is we see vile rhetoric that gives license to hatred and abuse. As was mentioned previously, black trans women are a demographic that overwhelmingly receives a lot of abuse from external sources. Not only that, but if you look at people in suicide rates, black trans women have some of the highest rates of suicide because of that license that's been given to that. And looking at this, we need to protect people. We do. Not protect creepy little voyeurs spying on people in restrooms, causing problems, but people just minding their own business after a nice aqua aerobics class. I would recommend that the city take some kind of stance to say that that type of bigotry is not acceptable here because it is clear that that type of license leads to suicide attempts and gives license to people to be abusive, puerile, churlish, and immature. And for those people who are calling to see people's genitalia, I want to see your browser histories, because it seems like you're quite obsessed with this. So do more, do right, do east. Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Mike Newell. Mike Newell?
My name is Mike Newell. I have lived in Santee for 35 years. Unlike many people present here, I am a resident of Santee. I pay taxes in Santee, and I vote in Santee. I'm also a member and actively involved in programs with the Cameron YMCA, a building that is owned and provided by the City of Santee. Protesting is a right in this country. In this case, the act of protesting a law people disagree with, the people, the media, and a cause have shifted it to a person. Lost in the shouting is an individual who is also wanting to exercise their right under the law. I served 22 years in the military, tasked with preserving and protecting rights of people all over the world. The right to protest, the right to vote, the right to live our lives with certain personal freedoms guaranteed under the law. I am not here to debate a cause. I'm not here to pose in front of a TV camera. I am here to support a person who is in pursuit of their rights under the law. I also wanted to make it known, this is a person who wore a military uniform for eight years, who went out and defended other people's rights and now has to fight for their own. Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Bonnie. Bonnie Price? Yeah, sorry, there's a, it's a long.
I'm Dr. Bonnie Price. I'm a friend of Kristen Wood. I have been friends with her for about two decades. And I knew her when she was male, and I applaud her decision to become a female, fully female. She took advantage of medical science to relieve her pain at not being who she felt she really was. And I regard her as a walking, talking example of what modern medicine can do in our society. And we have to think about people's mental health. When they are hurting, they hurt. And what I would like you to do tonight and from now on is to do what you have been doing in the community, which is leading the community to love, not hate, and to respect the happiness of a person who is the happiest I have ever seen her in the couple decades I've known her. And she exercised her right that was first enunciated in the preamble to the Declaration of Independence. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by the Creator with certain unalienable rights, and among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Kristen has found happiness. Help spread the joy she feels." Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Shabon. Shabon?
Hello, my name is Shabon. I'm a lifelong resident of Santee. I attended public school here and went to West Hills High School and finished my undergraduate here in San Diego. I'm here today as a constituent of Santee because this topic is near and dear to my heart. As someone with a background in anti-discrimination law and psychology, Kristen has allowed me to speak in support of her today. I cannot speak to the trans experience, as I am a cisgendered woman, and I'm not trying to. But I'm here to speak for women in general. Those who put hate into existence and wish death upon trans women in the LGBTQIA+ community do not represent all constituents of Santee, and I'm tired of being lumped into that. The existence of trans women in traditionally woman-centered spaces does not harm me as a woman, does not put me in an unsafe environment, and does not take away from my experience as, and my own womanhood. As a cisgendered woman, trans women are just as much a woman as I am. We experience violence in the same ways and along the same rates. According to RAINN, the Rape and Incest National Statistics, taken from the DOJ and the Department of Defense as of 2022, they state that 1 in 6 women in the U.S. have been sexually assaulted in their lives. The Violence Against Women Organization cites studies taken from the DOJ and Department of Defense that over 50% of trans people experience sexual violence, with 1 in 3 trans women and girls making up the largest part of that statistic. And as said previously, black trans women make the largest part of that statistic for violence. I am citing these statistics to show that trans women are women and that all women in the United States are subjected to shockingly high rates of sexual violence. To say otherwise indicates that you don't understand what it means to be a woman or that you even care. Trans women and all women of Santee are watching tonight and have been waiting for you to do what is right for all Santee residents, which is to accept all people for who they are and not to discriminate against them because you believe your religion allows you to do so. Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Maria. The next speaker, Maria? Maria?
Hello, Santee City Council. My name is Maria. My pronouns are she and her. I'm a resident here in Santee. I'm a parent, and I was an educator in East County for two decades. I taught approximately 3,000 students in my career, and I was my school's 2021 Teacher of the Year in El Cajon. And it was my privilege to get to work with all kinds of youth, including transgender youth. Over my time as an educator in East County, I got to know many students that went through gender, social gender transition, which means changing their name, their pronouns, their clothing. And I got to experience what they went through through their eyes. Their gender identity or how they see themselves did not match the gender that they were assigned. Some had supportive parents, some did not. Some had supportive parents, some did not. All of them lived in hostile East County and experienced violence in some way. This is a statement to you from Santana High School students. They asked me to read this to you. "The students of the Color Spectrum GSA at Santana High School in Santee submit this statement in support of trans youth and trans people everywhere. The protest and media reports against Kristin makes us feel unsafe in this community. Some of our members attended recent counter protests at our local YMCA, and we have seen media reports where we have seen adults in our community speaking out against trans people in hateful ways that leave us feeling scared and confused. All youth and all people deserve to feel safe in their community. The misgendering and misrepresentation of Kristin is disrespectful and difficult for us as trans youth. Thankfully, we have also seen some amazing people come out to support us. We are thankful for all of the people that have supported Kristin, and as an extension, have supported us. The trans community has watched this unfold, and they have been a victim to this harm. If we want to protect women and children, we need to focus on how hate deeply wounds us. As a city council, you have a duty to protect and respect all types of residents. I implore you to please become educated on this matter. I ask you to learn and take training from people out of your comfort zone so you can educate your community on the real harm, which is hate."
Next speaker I have is Ryan Corbeil. Is that Ren or Ryan?
Ren. Good evening. My name is Ren Corbeil. I live in Lakeside and work, worship, and shop in Santee. I exercise at the YMCA. When I come to the Y to swim in its beautiful pool, I appreciate that I'm privileged in many ways. I'm physically healthy, I have been taught how to swim, and I can afford a membership. I realize many people in our community, and most people in the world, do not have these opportunities. I am white, heterosexual, cisgender male. That allows me to go pretty much anywhere that I'm legally permitted and to be my full, authentic self. I am a member of classes that have been historically created for the advantage and privilege of people like me. But people like me are seeing change, and change can be a frightening thing for those who want to maintain their privilege. People's attitudes towards sex and gender are changing. We are more aware now that our identity does not solely conform to that imposed by classical biology, religion, or historical social norms. Here, at the Santee YMCA, but all across the US, our communities are facing existential challenges in how we perceive, judge, and respond to people that are not like us. We read about it every day, mass killings here, insurrections there, disruptions at school board meetings everywhere. The reality is that we do not need to be frightened of change. Yes, I have empathy for young women who are worried for their safety in locker rooms, but we must listen, reflect, and to each other with compassion and intention to help everyone, including the LGBT community and women like Christine. Not just those with privilege. We do not need to be afraid of what we do not understand. That is a reaction from the last millennium. To those who are afraid of losing power, the old guard who worry about becoming irrelevant, powerless, or unwanted, you are still needed, just in new ways. Your knowledge, imagination, and experience are as important as ever, as we learn to collaborate. And if someone is afraid of losing power, they never truly had it to begin with. Power comes from humility, compassion, and a desire to serve. End this mentality that judges individuals, disrespects...
The next speaker I have is Marie. Reminder, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. This is my first time speaking, I'm a little nervous. But anyway, I came out of my home today with no intention of being here. I'm not here for hate. I know that every single person in this room is valuable, is loved, and I don't know you. I don't know you. But I do know this. I hear a lot of, today, tonight, about hate and against Chrissy, against transgender. But I'm here to defend my identity. I am a woman, like many have stated. I'm a woman, and I have grandchildren, I have granddaughters, and daughters, and sons. And there's so much to say, and after I've heard, there's so much to say, but I just want to make sure that you all understand that there is a truth. Each and every soul in this room was born by a woman. There will not be another person that can have a baby. And there are people that the door has been opened, starting with transgender. Might not be a transgender, but it also could include, because I doubt, when you go to a gym, they say, "Are you a trans?" They certainly can't ask me if I'm pregnant, you know? You can't ask somebody if they've been vaccinated. So I don't think that question is in that application. So that leaves the door open for not just trans, but other anyone, any male. And having been somebody who has been violated multiple times sexually, as has my family, this is not, this is, this just gives an opportunity for people that aren't necessarily on their best behavior, not necessarily aren't coming sincerely. But I don't, I feel like, as much as they're saying people are attacked, that we women, we women, not assigned women, biological, when I die and someone digs up my bones, say I was a female.
The next speaker I have is Victoria Brennica. Victoria?
Hello, my name is Victoria Brennica. I use she/her pronouns. I am a woman. I am an educator. I am a community member, and I am a lifelong resident of East County. And I am here in solidarity with Chrissy and trans people here in East County. Each of you standing or sitting in front of us right now were elected to serve and represent your constituents here in Santee, and I would hope that you continue to ensure that the folks here are safe, and continue to do what you were elected to do. So please ensure that all of our facilities here in the city of Santee remain trans-friendly. In addition, each of you on this council need to speak out against anti-trans rhetoric to ensure Chrissy and other trans women in our community feel safe. I'm going to mention this because somebody earlier mentioned that they were a survivor. I too am a survivor, and I was, I'm a survivor, and I was, I experienced that from a cis man. I do not feel unsafe around any women. I would not feel unsafe with any woman, trans woman, any woman in a locker room. I'd feel unsafe with men in a locker room. And I think, you know, if we're going to bring up, you know, being a survivor or anything with sexual harassment, I think that it needs to be known that trans women are women, and trans women have only treated me with respect and safety, and I don't think that it is right to assume that all, all trans women are somehow dangerous or anything like that. I think it is a disgusting stereotype, and I don't think that we should be using that rhetoric here. And I hope that all of you on this council, please speak out against that and continue to...
The next speaker I have is Ben Richards.
I was here at both rallies, Christie. I appreciate what you said up there. Okay, I appreciate it. Okay, got it. But the thing comes to these parents is that we have boundaries. And I'm hearing a lot of language about inclusivity and respecting people's boundaries. When are my boundaries going to be respected? Because all I'm asking for, I personally don't want, and I feel unsafe, when a grown man, that's my belief system, is taking a shower in the YMCA locker room with my seven-year-old daughter. And I don't appreciate it, and I feel unsafe, but these people want me and you to bend over backwards and continue to respect their ever-growing list of crazy boundaries while at the same time, I used to say that they don't care about your boundaries, and they're still going to cross it. But I don't say that anymore. They care about your boundaries. They're going to actively seek to identify your boundaries, and they're going to cross it, because they like it, and they don't have any respect for parents like me, who feel unsafe. I mean, sir, with all due respect, you sued Crunch Fitness a few years ago. I mean, I'm not asking for much, but here's the thing, here's a call to action, okay? This fight that I've been doing, it's in all the schools, it's in all the institutions, and they're coming after the kids. So you need to wake up, stand up, and speak up, and you need to get activated now as a parent, because if you don't get activated now, what will you get activated about? So I don't appreciate this disrespectful attitude towards my boundaries. Nobody talks about that. But again, they don't care about me, and they don't care about you. So you better get activated, because they're going to continue pushing, and pushing, and pushing, and it's going to get to be a complete insane clown world. Thank you all.
The next speaker I have is Peggy Wiley. Peggy Wiley?
Hi, I'm Peggy Wiley. I worked for the YMCA for the past 10 years. I am the water aerobic instructor there. I've known Christie for two years now, for as long as she's been at the Y. I have been in the locker room with her many of the times, and I see it not a threat. I happened to be in there the day that this young lady was taking a shower. She did not see Chrissy. She was in the shower the whole time. The whole time she was in the shower, she just heard Chrissy's voice, and she assumed that she was a man, because she has a deep voice. But once she did not...
Ma'am, hold on one second.
Can we close the doors, please? Can somebody please close the doors?
Want to restart it?
Ma'am, we're going to restart your time, because there was so much...
You don't have to restart. It's just going to stop the clock. You go whenever you come to it.
Because I wanted to make sure I hear what you're saying, and there was just too much disruption.
I happened to be in the locker room that day when this incident took place. I was witness to it. This young lady was in the shower, doing her business, while we were out doing our business, getting dressed together, and we were talking together. And Chrissy left, and she said, "Goodbye, I love you, I'll see you next year." And I said, "Goodbye, I'll see you next year." And Chrissy left, the young girl opened up the shower curtain and asked me if that was a man. I said, "No, that's a woman." So I assume she didn't see anything who Chrissy was. And there was an incident report written up. There was a medical... There was an incident report taken by this young lady stating that she heard and did not see. And that's all I have to say. No, I have one more thing to say. YMCA has been good to me. They're a pillar, they're a backbone to this community. They accept everybody. If you close down the Cameron, you're going to shut that whole pool down to a lot of people who need it, and who really rely on it. That's all I have to say. God bless everybody.
The next speaker I have is Jenek.
Louis, Ur- Uridel.
Was that Maurice?
No, it's L-O-U-I-S, Louis. Lois, Louis.
Is there a last name?
Yes, Ur- Uridel, U-R-I-D-E-L. Okay, next speaker I have is Monique. Monique. Reminder, you have two minutes.
Down here on the end, give them the pictures down there on the end.
It's for, right here.
Yeah, it's kind of like court, they want you to go to a certain place first. So. But thanks.
Hello. I'm a heterosexual mom, married mom of three daughters, and I've met Christine, and I'm very comfortable with her, any transgender woman, being with any of my three daughters, my youngest being 11. So seventeen-year-old Rebecca Phillips had a major disservice done to her. She saw something that no one had ever educated her about. So she told the front desk at the YMCA, and they told her that what she saw was a transgender woman, and that she was allowed to be in the women's restroom. But this didn't explain to Rebecca what transgender was, and why someone might be that way. Rebecca went home, and instead of being educated on what transgender was, she was prompted to come to City Hall, where her story was inflated and many lies were told. And Rebecca knows in her heart that this happened. Sixty-six-year-old Christine Wood is a transgender female, as you have met her, with children and grandchildren, and I had the pleasure of meeting her at the protest, and her daughter and granddaughter were present there. You know, as she stated, she's lost 60 pounds during quarantine by keeping up with classes at the gym with her gym friends, and she has stated, as we all know, she has had gender confirmation surgery. So any stories or protests, any stories, protest signs, or council members that are spreading lies about a seventeen-year-old seeing a penis is just not true. Tracy Thill, who put the egregious Y protest together, has worked as a special education assistant but was fired from her job because she refused to keep children safe by testing weekly for COVID. I worked in special education for-
The next speaker I have is Michelle Dressler. Michelle Dressler, can you come up to the podium, please? Ma'am, your time is up.
Hi, Council, my name's Michelle Dressler. I am a Santee resident, but I'm just here tonight as a member of Santee Parks and Recreation Committee. There's been a lot of discussion already, but I just wanted to tell everyone who's still in this room about Fido Fest. It is Saturday. All right, it's Saturday, February 25th, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It's going to be at Town Center Community Park East, where the Twilight Brews and Bites, Twilight Brews and Bites, the festival formerly known as the Bluegrass Festival, that's where that'll be, I'm pretty sure, but you can check me on that. The website is sante special events dot com, all one word, no hyphens, no underscores or anything like that. And yeah, so Fido Fest, once again, Saturday, February 25th. And we still need lots of volunteers and donations, too, so anything that dogs and shelters can use, blankets, old towels, any extra dog food or whatever, we could definitely use that, so that's all, thank you.
You have two minutes. The next speaker I have is Sherice Stack. Sherice Stack.
Perfect example of you can speak about anything on non-agenda public comment.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, and City staff. I'm a longtime Santee resident. I have been here so long that I was at the first Fido Fest, it was fantastic. I'm here today to share my thoughts. I appreciate all the comments that have been shared before and appreciate this opportunity. I am concerned in regards to recent events that have happened and situations that seem to be brewing, misunderstanding, and situations that don't support compassion, dignity, fairness, equity, or respect for others. I've come to Santee because it's a place for families and a place where hopefully children can learn those important pieces or important values in their life. I've been a longtime YMCA member, love the Y, fully support their policies, and support their programs to create safe spaces for all. They do have divided locker spaces, so for those who need additional privacy, that is available, if people feel that they are not safe. However, I want to point out that I feel like it is a safe space, I've never felt unsafe there, and that simply being LGBTQ+ does not equal being a threat. I wanted to also say that I hope people, when they are thinking about their concerns about others, base their safety concerns on content of one's behavior and character, rather than maybe assumptions. Again, I want to support safe space for all, opportunities for people to raise their voice and be heard. I'm asking for the City Council to support policies and ordinances that support community agencies and individuals with safe spaces for all, and that support compassion, dignity, equity, fairness, and respect, and renew the wise lease.
The next speaker I have is Jasmine Driscoll.
Good morning, Counselor, or good evening. My name is Jasmine, I'm a longtime resident of San Diego for about 10 years, and soon to be East County resident. I'm just here to address the concerns, considering the Y, of course, and as many have stated before me, in support of Kristin Woods. Having been to the second protest, there were a lot of hateful and derogatory comments made, not just towards Kristin, but towards the entire LGBT community, one such member saying that he wanted to string us up and hang us. I don't know exactly how that resounds in all of your hearts and your minds, but we just want to be who we are, and I would appreciate it if there was such an ordinance or something of that end to help put a safe space out for us. Because while there is progress and there is inclusivity, there is a lot left to be desired and a lot left to to be done for progress, rather than sit there and be hateful and say, hey, trans women are not women, or trans men are not men. It's just a bit astounding in this day and age, given how much technology and advancements that we've made. I just want to say, you know, thanks for Kristin, for being so supportive, and also staying so strong, and that everyone who's been here to support us has just been amazing. And for those who use bigotry and religion and family values as a place of hate, I don't know exactly what to say, because that's not what everyone here was told to be, right? When we're all growing up, we're supposed to be kind and caring to one another, and that's just twisting values to our use. Thank you.
The final speaker I have is Ed Pecuri. You have two minutes.
Great, well, I'm not here to hate anybody, and I really respect Christine speaking up here.
Mr. Pecuri, two minutes.
Two minutes, yeah, I got it. Thank you, Mayor Minto. So, the eunuch has existed in the Bible for thousands of years. What did Jesus say? For there are eunuchs who are born that way, there are eunuchs who have been made eunuchs by others, and there are those who choose to live like eunuchs for the sake of the kingdom of heaven. Those who can accept this should accept it. Those are the words from Jesus of Nazareth, the Son of God. However, what is he speaking about? Those who have given up who they were to become something different, for the sake of the kingdom of God, to serve, to do good. Why? Because it changes the mindset. What we're dealing with, though, is not that. What we're dealing with is the law that is so broadly written that's causing fear in cisgender females, causing fear of fathers who have children. Where do you draw the line? That's the problem here. All these people are well-intentioned, you know, they don't want to harm anyone, the people who are concerned about their families, they don't want to harm anyone, but where do you draw the line? What exactly is it? And how do you tell? It's so blended, the definition is so broad. It puts legislators in a very difficult position, because the Son of God even admitted, the Philip baptized a eunuch from Ethiopia. Queen of Sheba brought to King Solomon a eunuch. So what, so, I don't, it's not a derogatory word, but the point of it is, 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 there is, so, and he says, "Accept it," but what do you do about the broad definition that puts so much confusion in the minds of people?
Thank you.
All right, draws our public comment to close, and I just want to close with this one short statement, is that Vice Mayor Koval and I have met with the YMCA, we are conferring with, you know, our legal team, and we are going to make sure that everybody is safe and everybody is valued in our community, because that's the most important thing. We don't know what that looks like yet, but we're going to get there. Thank you very much for all of your comments tonight, and thank you for your patience.
Is that brief enough? Yeah, we'll give them a minute.
I came close.
Oh, I know you did. I was going to say, I know you.
Did you see?
Am I on now? Okay.
Oh, no, it was on here.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to have to ask you to please go outside with your conversation. We do have quite a bit of the people's work to get done here tonight. Thank you for taking your conversation outside. Hey, Lieutenant, can you do me a favor and make sure that that hall in the back is clear also, because we still hear all that chatter coming this way?
Toby, can I buy you a coffee tonight? Can I buy you a coffee, huh? I'll come join you for a little bit after this.
Hardcore groupies in the back, huh? Boy, that emptied the chambers. Yeah, have we, the City Council report yet? That's okay, we only have this one. All right, I think that takes aside number 10. And that's a pavement maintenance workshop fiscal year 2023-24, finding the action is not a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. Carl?
Let me switch the screen here, sorry about that.
It's okay, we've got plenty of time.
Hopefully, pavement is not such a controversial issue tonight. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Vice Mayor. Tonight, we're back before you again, after approximately a year since the last time we brought a pavement workshop to you. We're just going to talk a little bit about where we've been, where we're going, and a little bit of brief history on the pavement workshop we did back in February 9th of last year. Just a little bit more background, from 2002 to 2021, the average annual street resurfacing project budget was approximately $1.5 million. Through the years, our pavement management studies have shown we've needed more. This is also in addition to all the ongoing pothole maintenance and work that the Public Services Department does on a regular basis, small patching, minor things, we're talking about the work that's the major rehab of the streets. Again, on February 9th, 2022, staff presented the results of the updated payment management report in a workshop, and what this did was establish priorities in streets for the maintenance moving forward, and City Council had a lot of requests and suggestions of locations to look at. During that report, we've identified that the current pavement condition index is 65, and an index of 70 is Sante's desired goal. To put it in perspective, zero is a pavement that is fully ended its useful life, and 100 is a brand-new street. Again, payment management is the process of programming and maintaining payment network to provide the maximum benefit with available funds. It's not a worst-first kind of scenario, it's let's use the money the best way we can to save streets before they become too costly to repair. We also use the payment management report to determine future infrastructure needs in an effort to lobby for dedicated funding, like Transnet, Local Streets and Roads, Gas Tax, RMA, SB1, and we also use those numbers to report on those to the state and the federal government and Sandag. Given that, and that report back in February, City Council has made a great effort and made this a priority to dedicate significant amount of additional funding to accomplish the goals that were kind of established in this payment management report. I want to move, talk a little bit about what was actually accomplished last year with some of that money that was allocated. So in fiscal year 2022-23, with the current fiscal year, to date, we've completed 37 streets at a total cost of $3.9 million. Six streets were, 2 million of that, were completed using general funds that City Council allocated, in addition to the traditional funds of RMRA and gas tax. The streets included are Carlton Oaks, Quaymaca Street, Eleanor Paul, Magnolia, Pebble Beach, and Woodside Avenue, and I'll note, Quaymaca is currently under construction, if you haven't noted, it was delayed a few times due to some other projects and things past discussions. So to kind of put it in perspective with a map, this was all of the work that was completed in fiscal year 22-23, showing all the locations in red, and all the zones and streets that were completed with the funding that City Council allocated. Now, kind of moving forward to what proposed streets and recommendations staff is going to do, and I'm going to go into a little bit further detail in this as we move along, but what we're showing here in red, those are streets that we're recommending and already programmed in RMRA and SB1. As you know, we've come to you throughout the year to program those funds, because we have to do it months and if not years in advance. And the streets shown in blue are some of them that I'm going to bring up in the further part of the discussion, which are recommendations from staff. So talking about the RMRA and Transnet funding, right now, we're allocating for this next fiscal year, which will be the work completed in the summer for fiscal year 23-24, it's about $3.5 million. And going back to the previous slide, you can see in these zones, these are Zone CI, Zone AE, Zone BD, Magnolia, and Mission Gorge Road. The prices for all those are listed here, totaling to about $3.1 million. And the reason why we're not programming all of it is, you know, right now, what we often do with City Council is we ask for additional money for contingencies, and we're hearing in the industry, obviously, an uncertainty in bidding, we want to leave a little bit of a cushion there, but what we normally do during construction award, which will come to you later in the year, we'll ask for authorization to spend some additional funding if it is available, and if the bids do come in favorably, and we'll be looking for some recommendation from you tonight on where those priorities may lie, in addition to maybe some of the recommendations we have. So the remaining budget out of the 3.5 million is about $349,000, and three of the streets in the payment management report that were recommended, or three of the neighborhoods and streets, were Halburn's at an estimated cost of $150,000, Zone DD, which is a very large zone in the Wheatlands neighborhood, and Zone BA, which is around the Princess Joanne North neighborhood at 330. So staff's going to be asking kind of for recommendations, what City Council's preference in going into those, doing parts of them, doing all of them, or if they have other streets they're interested in doing instead of those. Now talking, moving on a little bit to the general fund. For fiscal year 21-23, general funds, City Council allocated $4.1 million over the last couple of years, and as I mentioned, in the last fiscal year, or in the current fiscal year, we've already spent over $2 million. That's leaving a balance of about $2.1 million to spend this fiscal year. And then in addition to that, through the ARPA process, City Council allocated an additional $1 million of ARPA. That's giving us a more discretionary fund amount for Council to give direction to staff on of about $3.1 million. This is, these are streets that aren't already currently programmed in RMRA or SB1, which we have to do in advance. So with that in mind, back at the City Council workshop on February 9th, City Council, and prior workshops, City Council identified a list of streets that they were interested in during commentary and during conversations, and what staff is identifying here is all those locations, and we've established a new price for each one. We've broken into two categories, those are overlay streets and more maintenance streets with some deep lift patching and repairs. So for the overlay streets, some of the highest priority locations were Graves Avenue and Pepper Drive, Pebble Beach Drive from Grass Valley Lane to the end, and then the Cape Seals, it's Carlton Oaks Drive from Carlton Hills to Veneta, Carlton Oaks Drive from Weathersfield to West Hills Parkway, Quaymaca Street from Mission Gorge Road to River Park, Pebble Beach Drive from Green Book Drive to Grass Valley Lane, Prospect Avenue, Atlas View Drive to Ellsworth Lane in the proximity of the Pride Academy School, Woodside Avenue from David Ann to City Limits. Note on that one, that's a neighborhood we've already done some significant patching with the intent of coming back to City Council to complete some of those improvements with surface treatments, with a slurry seal, cape seal type treatment. And then finally, Zone CF, which is the Gorge Avenue neighborhood. And forgive me if we missed any, but I think those are all the ones that were identified, and if you have further ones, please let us know. So kind of breaking it down, staff has kind of looked at these, looked at economy of scale, looked at the payment management report, and we're giving some recommendations for consideration, and based on the amount of the budgets. What staff is recommending, we do Graves and Pepper Drive, Prospect Avenue from Alice View to Ellsworth, Carlton Oaks Drive, finishing up parts of that, and Zone CF, which is the Gorge Avenue neighborhood. That's with the general fund balance, that has much more flexibility than the other funding sources. And then with the ARPA funding, we're recommending Carlton Oaks Drive, Weathersfield to West Hills Parkway, and Woodside Avenue from David Ann to City Limits. Again, we're not recommending expending at all right now, these are the ones we plan to go to bid with, with Council's authorization and recommendation, leaving a little cushion, and allow us, if the bids do come in favorable, to use some of that excess funding and try and spend as much of this as we can to get as much work as we can in the summer completed. So kind of laying out all of those council priority areas, we've made good progress. All the streets shown here in green are what we've already completed, with all that discretionary funding City Council's allocated, that 4 million plus. What's shown in yellow is what staff is currently recommending we do this summer, and then what is in red is some of the areas that City Council identified that staff is recommending we don't do now, but maybe at a later date or the next fiscal year. So kind of pulling it all together and looking at funding in total, Transnet and RMRA funds, we have 3.5 million, general fund balance, we have 2.1 million, ARPA funds, we have 1 million for a total budget for this fiscal year, which is the largest in history of $6.6 million. Keep in mind, that's a significant increase from the 1.5 million we've normally used due to Council's efforts to meet our goals. The construction estimate for staff's recommended streets are Transnet of 3.1, general fund of 1.5, and ARPA about a little over 900. And again, here's the list of streets I showed you before with all of staff's recommendations, red being RMRA and SB1 funding already programmed, blue being staff's recommendations of City Council priority streets identified. And finally, with that, staff is making the recommendation City Council support and approve the zones, CI, BG, AE, BA, Magnolia Avenue and Mission Gorge Road to be resurfaced with Transnet and RMRA, programmed and available funding into the 2024-28 Capital Improvement Program, provide direction on staff recommendations for additional streets to resurface, utilizing the remaining general funds and ARP funds, and provide direction on the remaining funds identified for RMRA for Halburn's Boulevard, Zone DD, Zone B, or any other priority streets Council wants to discuss with staff tonight. And with that, staff's available for any questions.
Nope.
All right, there are no speaker slips, so we'll go to council comments. First comment I have is your recommendation slide reminds me of mock interview, council meeting I did, where they decided to pull from the agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and you get the rest. Not a very functional city council meeting, that's why it was a council meeting of dysfunction junction. So, having said that, I thought it was a lighter note. Do you have anything?
You have to say it was a League of Cities.
Who cares where it was at?
The mayor and I took a drive on Monday, and we went through a few streets that we saw. I don't know if we want to work on this other part first, and then maybe do an add-on at that point, but I've come up with some streets.
I think we should go through this list of streets first.
Right, that's what I thought.
Do you want to talk about them?
I was going to let you talk about them, because we drove.
I'm satisfied with the list. I would just, on the Prospect Avenue recommendation, I don't, the part on the chart marked out in red, it looks to me like it doesn't go all the way down, there's like a little gap between some yellow and then, which is, I need glasses to read the yellow, but.
See if that works.
Okay. Oh my goodness, okay, yes, I can read. So the yellow is fair, and the, I guess, peach color is marginal. If we had extra money, we would just pick up that little bit of marginal, because it looks like Prospect, we're getting some marginal and some very poor done.
We could certainly, depending on conditions and funding, that's where we ask for discretionary funds or the ability for change orders and additional work. We can look at those and in the field, make field adjustments and extend those areas based on available funding. Right now, we're just kind of looking at the zone and the area that's the highest priority that was identified, and we can certainly expand those areas if that's Council's wish.
Okay, because what I see is it's, sorry, let me get these on again. I see it's marginal, and then it goes up to, looks like, poor, and then it goes to marginal again, so, and then it goes to fair. again, so, and then it goes to fair. And there's just a little tiny piece that's, you know, you could pick up. And it connects right to a street. I don't know if you can see that on your same chart.
Do you have that slide you can pull up for us?
Let me see, I do have some backup slides with some of these. Let me see if I have this available to bring up so we can help aid this discussion.
Read them.
Do you need a pair of glasses, too?
Nope, that's not it.
That's not it.
Okay, this one. Okay, see, what's that blue street?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So you see that little gap in between where the red ends and then it goes into yellow?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe pick up that if we can.
Over towards Via Day Victoria.
Yes.
We can certainly look at that and try and include that into the bid documents if that's the wish.
If we have the funds, a suggestion.
Marlene, can you make a note to talk about this at the retreat? Also, some of the other streets.
So you're actually really asking for three different directions here, right, Carl? Can I, I think that sort of break that down to?
I mean, to kind of summarize the recommendation, we're asking for city council either to approve staff's recommendation for the general fund money and the RMRA and SB1 money, and also to give us direction with some of that additional money on where, if the bids do come in, to help us prioritize where to go so when we go out to bid, we can focus on those locations.
So the first one is the SB1 transnet money, that $3.1 million. I mean, I'm in favor of staff's recommendation there, covering those six items, I guess, in there. We go to the next section, and it's this, is it the Halburn's, the Zone DD, and the BA, and all that you're kind of looking at, right?
Yep.
All right, so my first one is really DD. I mean, DD is over a million dollars, and it's in the Wheatlands Industrial Park area there. It's actually where my office actually sits, in that area. And we all know the roads are pretty bad over there, and a lot of it's because of trucking. The truckings that go through there, the distribution, and, you know, quite frankly, we have a trucking company that uses it for, what do you call it? They have a school up the road, up Woodside, that uses our public streets for training, for their school. And just day after day after day, they're just, people who are learning how to drive these trucks are beating up our roads. I'm more interested in the section of Woodside that goes from the proposed roundabout up from there. I'd be more interested to see what that cost would be than spending a million dollars within the Wheatlands Industrial Park to this point. I'm not sure of the condition of the roads or anything like that. I know you do look at, obviously, the bang for the buck and, you know, creating longevity within our roads and all that stuff. But getting into the industrial park or getting through there is actually more critical to me at this point.
Well, and again, the mayor and I drove those, and we actually, that was going to be one of the recommendations, is let's pass on for a year or so on Wheatlands Park and go straight down north Woodside because that's in terrible condition where Woodside could, or Wheatlands, the 10 streets there could probably handle a year or even two, or three or four, really. So that's.
I'm not talking about how long it can last, I'm just looking at that area. And if we spent money in that area at this point, I'd rather see us look at Woodside, you know, whichever, what is that called, South Woodside? I don't know.
North Woodside.
That's north, I don't know which side is which at this point. And opposed to spend a million dollars within industrial park at this point, I don't know if Woodside is the right answer at this point. I'm just giving you an example, if we were going to spend it in that area, you know, I'd rather look at North Woodside itself. The Halburn's in that section there, we are also doing, in your suggestion of Zone AE, which is in the transnet and the SB1 money, we'd probably get some bang for the buck if we do the extension Halburn's from Mass to the terminus, right?
Yeah.
Is it just to Lake Canyon, is it all the way up?
It's only for Mass to Lake Canyon, but we could take it all the way up. Yeah, let me let Toby speak about that.
Thanks, Toby, come on up. What time you got to go, nine, right?
Yes, I have to come up here.
You've got 35 minutes.
A couple of years ago, we.
Use the microphone. Thank you.
A couple of years ago, we resurfaced Halburn's Boulevard from Lake Canyon to the far northern. So that portion of Halburn's from Mass to Lake Canyon is the only street in Zone AE that would be remaining to do. And it was just that we didn't have enough available budget in order to add that street to the current contract. It would be in.
But if we're doing the surface streets in that adjacent neighborhood there, you may get the bang for the buck within that, right?
Yes, because we're right there.
Right? And this, the Zone BA, I'm not familiar with this, so let Rob speak on that area there, up there. But the next section, you got guys down here, this general fund, ARPA, streets and money, I guess. You have suggestions of four streets in the general funds and then suggestions of the ARPA monies. I'm going to go Graves and Pepper, we all know it's really bad, right? It's really bad, but it's a big number. And, you know, it worries me that we're spending all our money, and how long is that stretch of street, half mile?
Plus or minus, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not saying not to do it, I'm just bringing up, you know, concerns at this point. Prospect, the Atlas View to Ellsworth, that's in addition to the other part of Prospect in front of the school you're referring to, right? Or is that?
This is the part in front of the school, the Pride Academy.
Yeah. Okay. There. Carlton Oaks, Carlton Hills to Fenita Parkway, in your, in your presentation, you had $835,000 in there. In our, in our deal, we have $280,000. Am I missing something or is that a typo?
That's just a typo, I'm sorry. The what you're seeing in the staff report is correct, this is a typo on this. I apologize for that.
Okay, because that's a, one, for, a big difference. I think we just picked up the Graves money twice there, so.
Yes, I believe that's what happened, I apologize for that.
Okay. Laura can speak about the Gorge Street, I guess, right? It's more in your, I'm just going, kind of going through some of these recommendations here and kind of looking at what the conditions of these are and whatnot.
That particular area, I talked about it last time, it's really torn up because coming out of the Sprouts Market, there didn't used to be, I guess, left turn to, okay. Anyway, there was no left turn down Mission Gorge, so people would come down Carlton Hills Boulevard and go make that loop, trucks, you know, every vehicle in the world for years. So it's a residential neighborhood and it's in pretty rough shape.
The ARPA funds, you got Carlton Oaks on here again, Weathersfield to West Hills Parkway. So we just did the Fenita Parkway to Weathersfield, actually, yeah, we just did Fenita Parkway to Weathersfield. And I obviously fought for that last time, but the advantage of this again is that we're doing the neighborhood, the CI neighborhood, that's directly north of Carlton Oaks. So we can get this done all the way to the City Limits, correct, in there. You have the other Carlton Oaks, which I mentioned a second ago, it's a shorter stretch, but the condition of that from Carlton Hills to Fenita Parkway, Toby, if you can correct me, it doesn't seem as bad, just driving it. Is that, is the condition the same, or is it, is this more preventive for longevity?
It's the same treatment that we would apply on last year's Carlton Oaks Drive as the same that we will apply on the section from Weathersfield to West Hills Parkway. It's the same treatment in terms of condition if it's bad.
So I guess my question is, could we defer that section from Carlton Hills to Fenita Parkway? I guess it's really where I'm going here.
If you wanted to, yes.
Sure, and what's your recommendation as our pavement guy?
Like you mentioned, that we are essentially right there. We're in Zone CI, we're on the other portion of Carlton Oaks. The one that you're, the one we're talking about now is just on the other side to the east, so we're at the doorstep of it, so does it make sense to do it? We're there, yes. We'll get a cost benefit for it because we are there, we don't have to mobilize to an entire different street or zone.
And then going back in the staff report here, Carl, so in page two, we have overlay streets and cape seal, slurry seal streets. And some of these are picked up in your recommendation, but some aren't. Right?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, I'm looking them over real fast to see what they are, just to make sure. We did Pebble Beach last year from Mass Boulevard to Grass Valley, is that correct?
To Greenbrook.
To Greenbrook, okay. And you have, in here you have two figures, you have Greenbrook to Grass Valley and Grass Valley to the end. In here.
That's because there are two different treatments. One's an overlay and one's a cape seal. So that's why there's two different.
Right, the section between Greenbrook and Grass Valley is, again, as you drive it, it's in better condition than the.
That's correct.
All the way to the end of them.
Yes, that's a slurry seal treatment on that center portion.
Like I said, I'm in favor of the SB1 and the transnet funds for those six items there. I think we need to have discussion about these other funds still. Yeah, the Wheatlands is a big figure, I mean, it's a million dollars that I think could be reallocated if we so chose to.
And the mayor and I talked about that, too.
And looking at, I mean, that's a million dollars.
Council member, if I may, with that discussion, keep in mind the estimates we have, these are estimates and the bids aren't in. Based on our estimates, we would not have enough money to do Wheatlands, and conversely, we would likely not have enough money to do North Woodside based only on estimates. And North Woodside, just to expand, but let me, I'll wait until council members and the mayor speak on that, on Woodside.
So this is really just referring to, at that point, any excess funding, should there be excess funding?
Yes.
Yeah. So should there be excess funding, then, yeah, where are we with that whole turnabout? Roundabout, whatever. Turnabout, roundabout.
Well, it's currently still with Caltrans, and staff has moved on to other priorities, so we need to get it rebooted. You know, it kind of got stalled with Caltrans with our permits and reviews. Staff has moved on to other priorities at this point. However, we're trying to get it rebooted again and routed back through Caltrans to get all of our permits. To be honest, it hasn't been as high of a priority for us because we've had other priorities the city council has given to staff in some of our priorities, and we'll certainly, through workshops and through our CIP program, we'll be looking at it again.
So it's not, it's not really, I mean, it's on the books as something that we would like to do at some point, but it's not a reality, meaning it's not something that we could tie with North Woodside to get more bang for that buck with all the construction going on there at the same time.
It's a separate project all on its own, and it is funded, but they are not related to paving directly, no.
No, it's, you don't pave after you put a street in?
We wouldn't tie those two projects together.
Fair enough, but wouldn't there, the appropriate equipment be there?
I think it would be, but I guess it would be a matter of timing and scale of project. We would prefer, I'm just spitballing, but we would prefer to do the roundabout separate because it requires Caltrans permits, and most of that works in the Caltrans right-of-way. I don't know if we would get any economy of scale by doing the roundabout and that at the same time because the roundabout is all new construction, realignment, structural section. It's not just paving. It's much more than that. It's more of a major construction project where paving is a come in, come out, you're done in a week on those streets.
So you're saying it just wouldn't be the same company that would be doing?
Not likely. They would be different contractors, and paving would be a subcontractor to the roundabout.
Okay.
I do like your way of thinking, though.
I'm like, yeah, just, wow, it seems that there would be a street there, you would pave it. See what I know?
I think the worst part about that is because the roundabout money is restricted funds, and.
No, it's just, it's tying it in as far as timing goes, not as far as the funding of the funding mechanism to get it done. It was the timing of it, so that if that is on the books and it's going to happen, let's get that all done at the same time, so we're, you know, getting the biggest bang for our buck. But if that's nowhere on the near agenda, then it's kind of a moot point. Yeah, exactly. But, yeah, I would like to see that section of Woodside resolved as well, it's pretty bad. I mean, we've got lots of places still that are pretty darn bad within our, not just our main arteries and thoroughfares, but within the neighborhoods. You know, streets just cracking and weeds popping up in the middle of the darn streets. So I'm, it's difficult to say, well, we, we just, you know, because we're already in the area, that we'll just continue on this street even though it's not that bad, but we're just going to get the most bang for our buck when there are other streets in our neighborhoods that the citizens see every single day and their kids play in every single day, and they're just tore up from the floor up. So I know it's not the worst first mentality, and we try and do what we can, but there is also the reality that some of these streets just, they're, they may be safe for vehicle travel, but they're not safe for pedestrian travel.
Or bicycles.
Or bicycles. Yeah, you know a lot about that. So I still need to get, I still need to get my brain wrapped around how we aren't looking at, hey, keep it down over there, dude, how we aren't looking at that type of stuff as well. I mean, just, some of these streets are in really, really bad shape, and I don't know how we get around not taking care of them and still taking care of some of these streets that aren't in horrible, or that are nowhere near as bad a shape. And I, yeah, this, like you said, let's bring this up. I want to talk more about this at the retreat because this is.
You know, here's what I'm thinking. You guys are going to hate me for this suggestion. Council might like it, though, but here's what I'm thinking. Why don't we continue this and take care of it at the retreat? It's only a few days, so I know time is usually of the essence so we can get this process started. But this would give us a chance maybe to actually put some maps up on a wall and look at things a lot closer. What do you guys think about that?
We've got some that has to be, that we just needed approved tonight, like some of the things I think we're all in agreement on, but it's the, where do we spend the rest of it, if there is a rest of it part, that I would like to maybe.
Okay, let's.
Monday, we can make a wish list.
Okay, then, you know what, then, these streets that I was going to talk about, bring them up tonight, I'm just going to wait and keep those for Monday, and we can discuss them a little bit further because they're probably going to be streets that we probably have to, you know, look at for maybe '23, '24, or even later, because there probably won't be the money right now for some of these. But for me, I can tell you right now, one of my top priorities is that Prospect and Graves, because people, I've gotten plenty of calls on that, people have had damage to their vehicles and whatnot, so that definitely has to be done, and.
Carl, is the intersection of Pepper, some of the drainage issues and things like that, is that part of this figure of 835, are those things getting repaired, too?
Not necessarily. You know, those are bigger issues, and I'll let Steve talk a little bit about that.
That's why I want to understand, there's bigger issues there than just paving the road, so.
Yeah, some of the biggest issue we have there is just the drainage water standing in the intersection. So as part of the paving, we would add grade with asphalt to get water back to where the curb lines are to get it to flow, but the cost does not include doing a. But the cost does not include doing a comprehensive redo of new storm drain inlets or anything like that. But we can definitely improve greatly the drainage to get it to move towards the gutter lines and get it out of the intersection where it just sits.
Isn't the asphalt higher than the gutter right now?
It is, but
An inch higher than the gutter or something?
It should be, but as the bowl is at the intersection, it's lower in the center of the intersection than the adjacent curbs. So as part of when we would reconstruct it, we would bring the grade up to get the water to feather out and travel down the roadway back to the gutters.
So the crown is not high enough?
At the center.
So there's a crown on Graves Avenue north of Pepper, but then it flattens out into almost a dip. And so what we have to do, and we have surveyed it, is we would add enough asphalt so that where the water would sit in that dip can actually move south easterly towards the curb and gutter that's there as you go towards Alcoa Home.
I think it's time that we need to get that done. That's why I brought up the, I just want to make sure, again, I figured these guys were, but I want to make sure we
Well, we're on the same page then. Same page as a priority.
And then if I may, I just wanted to follow up with on the reason we had included that area of Carlton Oaks Drive east of where we completed Finita Parkway. The reason we included that is the strategy to repair that would be a chip seal. We're doing a lot of chip seal work in that neighborhood in CI. And on the western side, that is in a worse condition. But being able to have a chip seal contractor mobilized in place there would have great cost savings to do that section and complete out Carlton Oaks to Carlton Hills.
Obviously, I hear you loud and clear. And I agree, obviously, with the strategy. Obviously, we want to try to get the bang for our buck in there. But as I'm looking at even our paving index here, that section shows good to fair to marginal and three different, you know, areas in there. And we just did, the housing project just got completed behind the liquor store, which did some paving. I don't know what they're, how it
They just did a half-street width there.
Half-street width, right? So I mean, there's a mix of things going on there. Plus, the trees in the median are actually causing problems on the asphalt, too, which is another issue. So, but, and I looked up at Pebble Beach here from, I'm sorry, it was Grass Valley to the end. And that is truly in our poor, I mean, again, according to the paving index here, it's in our poor condition. So, I mean, my brothers would be to change out that 280 to 250 and spend it on Pebble Beach at this point unless I hear differently. But it's just, we have a road that is in poor condition there. Not even, at least Carlton Oaks is in, that section is in marginal and fair condition.
I agree, and that's one thing that Ron and I talked about when we drove down there. And, you know, surprisingly enough that, I've been down there more than that, and I think it actually has kind of gotten a little bit worse since all the rains. Seams and things like that seem to have widened a little bit. Although there's not a lot of alligatoring or, you know, big chunks. But with those seams getting wider, it's going to cause problems. So I'm in agreement. I guess there's a consensus maybe on that, then?
Yeah, I think so. I do want to add a few streets, though, so I want to know how to do that. I wanted to, do you want to just give him the list and bring it up at the, because one of them is like Magnolia, Mass Boulevard, Magnolia, Queeamack, and then
No, I think that that's a more in-depth conversation. And we can do that better on Monday.
Okay. Well, I'm going to give this to you. And here's a list that I have. Some of it, I think, can be compared with if somebody just got their fix, some of these potholes.
Just to give you an FYI, so that it's not a surprise on Monday, but we're talking like Mission Gorge Road between Carlton Hills, which is over there by like Al Sporting Sports. Mesa Road, Prospect to Mission Gorge Road. Finita from Prospect to City Limits. Yeah. Yeah, that's a pet peeve because I know we did some restriping and painting there, but all we did is move the bikes and cars onto the actual damaged road, you know, poor quality road. And then Mass Boulevard between Biltier and Conejo.
That's on the list I just gave you, too. I've added about seven or eight more.
Just to put that on the record here.
A lot of that section, too, I mean, it's just straight potholes. And we just need Public Works to get out there like ASAP, to be honest, to start.
Especially like by Al Sporting Goods, that's really bad in that area.
So in our recommendation, that section is actually included in what Mission Gorge
Yeah, that is, but I mean, there's some areas like on, right by Santana Fields and there, it's really bad. And then over in, what they were saying about Bitner and even coming down Mission Gorge now. If you, from Mass to, to, almost the end of the street there, it's pretty bad. So there's a lot of places there that we need to work on. But again, you've got the list, so.
What do you mean, Mass?
Where do Mass and Mission Gorge intersect?
I'm sorry, Mass and Queeamack, I apologize. Doing two things.
That's going to be started here real soon, right?
Right.
Queeamack area?
Not the whole street, though.
That's south of Mission Gorge, Tobago Vista.
Right.
But he's talking about by Mass, Queeamack and Mass.
If you drive down there, you'll see what I'm talking about.
Okay.
I mean, there's a lot of places.
All right. So then
Mr. Mayor, if I could
That clears mud?
No, it's actually pretty clear. I mean, these are streets we see as well, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I could move your conversation forward. It appears that council's pretty close on accepting staff's recommendations for the transnet and RMRI funds. Maybe perhaps we could get approval on that for tonight so we could move that through the Sandag system as well. It sounds, from staff perspective, that the Graves and Pepper Drive area, it seems like everybody is in agreement that that should be a project that moves forward. The rest of them seems like there's a lot of discussion and we can talk about that on Monday, but if
Zone CF, I think we all agreed on.
Okay. So if adding Zone CF with
And Prospect?
And Prospect, yeah.
And Pebble Beach? Yeah, there was only a couple, I agree.
Maybe it's easier to list the ones you don't agree on and let us approve the rest.
So to follow up
So they may remember what they were?
Well, I
Carlton Hills. Wheatlands.
That was actually not, that's, we have extra money, right?
I think, you know, to kind of summarize from what Marlene was saying is, what our goal is to get enough recommendations because timing is critical for us. We want to get out to bid as soon as we can and get this to construction. And it does take time from this meeting moving on to put those exhibits, put the bid documents together, get it bid and awarded. So the most direction we can get right now with council's consensus, the better. Then we can move forward with those. And then through the workshop, I think it's clear. We can come up with ideas for where, if we do have available budget and change order, we can get clear direction from that workshop to move forward. And I think that'll be enough for us.
Those three areas, the Hoverns, the Zone DD, and the Zone BA, I'm just looking at recommendation here, those are areas that you're recommending if we had extra funds.
Those are what are recommended in the pavement management report.
Right. If we have, if we have extra funds?
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
All right, then I'm going to go out
It's really just down to this general fund money and the ARPA money.
So I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that, and I'm actually going to put this in the form of a motion, is that we approve Graves Avenue and Pepper Drive, Prospect Avenue between Atlas View Drive to Ellsworth Lane, Zone CF, the gorge area, removing Carlton Oaks Drive between Carlton Hills Boulevard to Finita Parkway, and then approving Carlton Oaks Drive, is that the one you wanted to come out?
Those stay, but we need to have
Okay, so, okay. And then also the ARPA funds Carlton Oaks Drive, which is Weathersfield Road to West Hills Parkway, and then Woodside Avenue, David Ann to Road, City Limits.
Add Pebble Beach.
And add Pebble Beach, which one is that? Go ahead and read it.
Can we, can we start again? Because I think, can we just say, if you agree, just maybe put up your actual recommendations, Carl?
All right.
No, you have a summary slide. Sorry, let me find that.
One more.
There we go. No, it's the one that Yeah. Your written recommendations. Yeah. So the first one, or in your staff report, it's item one.
Right.
You could just say, approve staff recommendation number one. And then go through that list of the other non-recommendation number one items that you want to approve tonight. And then everything else is in play.
Okay, the motion is to approve item one. And with the exception of Carlton Oaks Drive to, which is Carlton Hills Boulevard to Finita Parkway, adding
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's item two, though.
I'm sure I'm confusing it. Item one is just the pre-programmed money. You've already seen that stuff. You seem to be in agreement on it. So you can just say, approve one. And then with regard to recommendations two and three, here's what we can approve.
I'll make a motion to approve recommendation number one. Get that done.
Should we get a vote, Denver?
Yeah, separately.
And then, yeah, and then you'll do number two.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Did you catch that, who that was?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Let's vote on that, please. It's confusing trying to take too many at once. Yeah, good idea, thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, then.
So council, yeah, if we could now talk about the ARPA general fund monies? If there's any street you agree to?
I'm going to go each one separately.
Keep going back. There's a list of what, right here. This is what Sean was talking, this is what you
Okay.
Looking for.
Right, and this is, well, I would move general fund balance items, Graves Avenue and Pepper Drive, Prospect Avenue, Atlas View Drive to Ellsworth Lane, Zone CF, which is the Gorge Avenue neighborhood, minus Carlton Oaks Drive, Carlton Hills Boulevard to Finita Parkway, adding Pebble Beach Drive, Grass Valley Lane to the end. And I have a second. Please prepare to vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
And now, council, is there anything with ARPA monies that you wish to approve tonight?
I think, I think we can do that, right?
I'll make a motion to approve the Woodside. Do you want, did you guys want the Carlton Oaks?
All, yeah.
Okay.
All the ARPA balance.
And Carlton Oaks, and
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
So to make it clear, that was a motion to approve the ARPA fund balance, Carlton Oaks Drive and Woodside Avenue. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All the streets that were discussed outside of that tonight, including the potential for additional streets based on funding left over or, and whatnot, we'll discuss and we'll continue that to the workshop on Monday. Thank you. That was, that was a great, great discussion there. So that takes us to a second round of non-agenda public comments.
No speakers.
Thank you. City council reports. Ron?
None.
No report.
I'll go last.
No, sir.
Dustin, Councilmember McNellis?
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
And so what I'll do is I'll start off with kind of a follow-up to Sandag and what occurred based on not only the conversation we had at the last council meeting, but what actually took place at the Sandag Board Meeting on Wednesday, Friday, two weeks ago. It was an opportunity for the Sandag Board of Directors to meet new directors and choose a new executive board. There was a lot of discussion regarding who was going to be there. There was a weighted vote for the chair and the first vice chair. And then that was, after the recommendations were made, substitute motions were entered and the weighted vote failed to do anything but place folks in there. The chair was Nora Vargas, who's chair for the County Board of Supervisors also. And then the first vice chair was Sean Illo Rivera. He's the president of the San Diego City Council. And then regardless of attempts to put a very moderate second vice chair in there failed also based on a weighted vote, which is what we've been making complaints about to Sandag for a long time, that the weighted vote is actually very much in conflict of what's doing fair and balanced. And so the result of that was eight, actually nine members of the Board of Directors excuse themselves. I had, I attempted to speak on behalf of the, or against the weighted vote. Although, there was a lot going on, whether or not it was done by, you know, purposely or not, the chair attempted to stop me from speaking. And so I ended up having to leave that meeting also in protest. From what I understand, the chair, vice chair, and second vice chair are now making phone calls to many of the board members. And I believe what they're doing is trying to to bring everybody back together. We're planning a retreat, I don't have a date on that, where we can actually discuss this weighted vote in detail and see how we can find a way to get around it so that it's more fair and balanced. We, I've talked to several attorneys, including our own attorney, about whether or not a weighted vote is constitutional or not. So probably not, I mean, it probably is, but we want to at least look at it a little bit to make sure. And also whether or not it also, when you have certain members that have a weighted vote putting together and behind closed doors, how things are going to be, whether or not that actually violates the Brown Act. So far, most everybody I've talked to believes it does. We don't know what the actual results of that might be. But we do need a member of the public who would make that complaint to the Sandag Board of Directors and their council. But I do, I want to be the ever optimist and say that I hope that there continues to be transparency or more transparency with that, or some even, with that Board of Directors. I just don't know how that's going to shake out yet, but I'm going to do my best to try and push that because people need to know what's going on by the people that handle a large portion of your tax dollars. And will handle their tax dollars for the next 40 years, roughly. So, on a different note, I had the opportunity to spend last week up in Sacramento with training 450 new freshman council legislators. It was very interesting, a lot of fun. I made a comment about that earlier and when we did this function junction exercise. I will be going to Universal Studio, or Universal City next week for the Southern California section. And it looks like we may have about another 450 to 500 freshman council legislators there also. So keep in mind, throughout the state of California, you have people who now are going to be serving on city councils with less than six months so far under their belt. And so we're going to train them to do the best we can to remind them that ethics are paramount, that their behavior is important and doing fair and honest work is absolutely imperative. All we can do is lead them to water, can't make them drink, as they say. So that's all I have. City manager?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you.
I do. Sorry, I do have a comment. Because what happened today with the East County Mayor, they met today to appoint subcommittees on Sandag, so Borders Committee, which I serve on, is and Mayor Minto was not given proper notice about the meeting. Sandag sent an emergency email about 11:49 this afternoon, and I just happened to read it, that the meeting is going on right now, that the mayor of Lemon Grove called the meeting. And the mayor of Alcoa Home was meeting. And um, uh, the mayor of El Cajon was on, uh, and and the mayor of La Mesa was on, and I just happened to log on. And I saw John wasn't on there, so I called him right away. And um, you know, credit to Bill Wells, the mayor of El Cajon, for really pushing back on what was happening, which they were trying to um, make assignments. The mayor of Lemon Grove was trying to make the assignments. Um, it was, it was just one of the most dysfunctional meetings I've ever seen. Um, so at the end of the day, he he tried and he was having connection issues logging on, and she knew that, and she just, you know, basically was saying, um, and the mayor of uh, La Mesa was saying, we, maybe we should just keep the appointments as they were last year. And, you know, she wanted to make new appointments and she didn't want the mayor of Santee, uh, she wasn't giving the mayor of Santee an opportunity to vote. And um, and so the mayor of El Cajon said, we're not voting then. And she said, okay, then you're abstaining. And it was just, it was ridiculous. It was ridiculous. I've never seen something like that. I I appreciate that we don't operate like that. Um, but it's the worst of the worst in government. So I applaud you for finally getting back on. And 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 so I'll say it ended with that we have no appointments for those subcommittees right now for East County.
Thanks, I forgot all about that.
Oh, I didn't.
It 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 was actually quite brutal. Uh, four mayors um, are responsible for making those appointments. One mayor wanted to do that. Um, and uh, you know, I've been involved with this for a long time and all the alternates are invited to be there so they could have a voice. And when we tried to take a vote, one vote, uh, the mayor of Lemon Grove said, uh, you know that's illegal, only the mayors can vote. And they voted every other time that I can remember. Uh, you've been there before to those meetings, you voted, right?
No.
Oh, that's right, I told you you couldn't vote. Um, just kidding. Um, and so it's it's very disappointing to see that happen where one person thinks that they run it. And uh, Mayor Wells reminded uh, Mayor Vasquez that uh, you you don't run, you don't chair the meetings, uh, you're just hosting the Zoom meeting. Uh, but that wasn't good enough. She just hung everybody up on that and uh, called the meeting adjourned.
Aren't they supposed to give uh, prior notice to that? Apparently they didn't give proper notice.
Well, it, the only notice really has to go to the uh, the primaries and alternates.
Well, it's a public, well, we got it at eleven o'clock and I answered one.
Yeah, I realize that, but yeah, that's not really a public meeting because there's no quorum of any board members or anything. So, you know, that's uh, kind of where it stands. So we'll see what happens.
That's dysfunction junction.
I'm sorry, I can't help but to chuckle at that one.
Sandag is the uh, is the model of dysfunction junction.
You know, I'm gonna use that line.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Um, I'm sorry, were you finished, City Manager?
No report, sir.
That's good. Great, thank you. All right, then, that uh, takes us to, oh, we have no closed session either. Great. That means that this meeting is adjourned.